Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the regular scheduled meeting of Beaver Creek City Council. I would like to call the meeting to order, please. May we have a roll call?
Councilmember Curran?
Here.
Councilmember Littrell?
Here.
Councilmember Rushing?
Here.
Councilmember Upton?
Here.
Councilmember Van?
Here.
Vice Mayor Garcia?
Here.
Mayor Stone?
Here. And now, if you will all join me for the pledge in a moment of silence, are there any Girl Scouts or Boy Scouts here with us tonight? Seeing none, I will leave. I'd like to pledge this to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And if we can all take a moment of silence to reflect on conditions around the world, thank you. Thank you. We have an agenda before us? Oh, they're here, officers. Okay, before we get to the agenda, let's take a quick break. We have a proclamation we would like to present, and I would like to ask the Vice Mayor, Joanna Garcia, to make this proclamation for us. And she'll be coming down in just a second. Hello, hello?
Well, thank you for joining us, and I believe Lori McIntosh and Ashley Marshall?
Yes.
Very nice to meet you. Thank you both for coming. I know you were doing such great work, which is why you're a little late. So, thank you so much for coming over. We do have a proclamation on behalf of City Council that we'd like to read for you here tonight. So, whereas communication operators are not as visible as the men and women who arrive at the scene of emergencies, but provide a vital link to public safety services as part of the first responder team, and whereas often called the unsung heroes of public safety or the first first responders, since they are usually the first to receive requests for emergency services from the public, and play an important role in the successful delivery of public safety services to those in need, and are the single vital link for our police and firefighters by monitoring their activities by radio and providing them information and ensuring their safety, and whereas the communication officers of the Beaver Creek Police Department have contributed substantially to the apprehension of criminals, suppression of fires, and treatment of patients, and whereas each communication operator has exhibited compassion, understanding, and professionalism during their performance of their job. Now, therefore, I, Joanna Garcia, and Mayor Stone, and all of City Council, would like to proclaim National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week in the city of Beaver Creek, and urge all citizens to honor the Beaver Creek Police Department communication operators and recognize them for their diligence and professionalism in helping keep our community, its citizens, and its employees and visitors safe. So, ladies, thank you very much for everything that you do for us. Thank you so much for being here.
Lori, or Ashley, would you have anything you would like to say?
Thanks for having us. I mean, we are the people that sometimes you don't always see, but we want to be there when you guys call and make sure you get the things that you need to have, and sometimes we do a lot of things behind the scene, digging and things that you don't realize that's going on, and a lot of times, we don't know what's going to happen, and we don't find out. Sometimes the officers share it with us, so it's nice to know that you guys are behind us. We do appreciate that. This is Ashley. She's our newest employee. She's been here two months. She came to us from Montgomery County. She was a dispatcher there for five years, so we're lucky to have Ashley. She's a very good dispatcher, and we appreciate you having us. Thanks for remembering us.
We know you were working up to the second day you guys came here, so we know it's very important work what you do, and we thank you so much for being here tonight. So, thank you again, and welcome to the panel.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thanks for everything.
It's really valuable what you provide to the police department, so this is the only time we get to see you, so thank you so much.
Forbore hiding.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, ladies.
Thank you. All right. Now, we have an agenda before us this evening. Any corrections? Seeing none?
Seeing none, I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second. Have a motion to approve the agenda submitted. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Approval of the minutes. With the minutes, we have received the minutes for the March 19th, 2018 work session. Any corrections? Seeing none?
Mr. Mayor, there's no corrections or comments. I would move for approval of the March 19th work session minutes.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the minutes of the March 19th work session as submitted. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Public hearing, PUD 541.
This is an application filed by Drew Gatliff, 1062 Ridge Street, Columbus, Ohio, 43215. The application requests a major modification of 1.17 acres of land to allow for the construction of a restaurant known as Raising Cane's Chicken Fingers, located on the north side of Indian Ripple Road and west of the existing Waffle House restaurant, further described as Book Three, Page Seven, Parcel Three, on the Green County Property Tax Atlas.
Thank you. Now, do we have an applicant present tonight that would like to address council? Please come forward. Give us your name and address, please.
Drew Gatliff, 1062 Ridge Street, Columbus, Ohio, 43215.
Thank you.
I'm here to answer any questions that you guys have, but we are very excited to be coming to the Beaver Creek community. As most of you or all of you are aware, our previous, we were hoping to be here sooner with another location, but that one fell through, and so we are here and very excited to be part of the community.
All right. Well, thank you.
Yes.
We'll see if we have any questions here in a minute.
Perfect.
Staff presentation, please. Mr. McGrath.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council. As Drew pointed out tonight, we're here considering an application for a major modification to PUD 541. PUD 541, if I go through the aerial photo, give you an idea, is the PUD associated with the old Kmart facility, as well as Green Crossing Shopping Development that's owned by Equity out of Columbus immediately to the east. There's been significant changes over this property last 15 years. The Green Crossing came in, Equity came in and refaced the most of the retail center, except for the Kmart, and as all you know, the Kmart went out of business, was quickly acquired by the developer who put in an at-home there. So, there's been a lot of upgrades since the aerial photo you see on the screen was taken. What we're looking at this evening, and what seems to be something that works around the mall area, concept you guys are all familiar with, would be to soften up the appearance from Indian Ripple Road, provide some streetscape. There's, as we mentioned, when the at-home project came in, there was over 497 parking stalls there. At-home was only required to have about 289. So, this development that we're looking at this evening, we'll take a few parking spots up in the outlaw, but there's more than plenty of parking available on the site already. So, what we're looking is to break up that sea of asphalt and work with these guys to get in a little bit of a, some of the smaller 3,500 square foot approximately on this project to soften up that streetscape along there and break up that asphalt field right there along Indian Ripple Road across from the green. Building design is something you may be familiar with. We did, as Mr. Gatliff pointed out, we did bring this through previously for the Kemp and Norfair Field Road location. It's the same, almost identical elevation that you have seen before, mixture of bricks, some EFS. You'll see the signage. There's requirements in the motion for your consideration that require or limit the amount of signage to what you see on the proposed elevations there before you. And the other part about this, if I go back to this photo, when Kmart was there, it was just a sea of asphalt. There was no landscape islands in the parking lot. Again, that was approved pre-city, pre-landscape ordinances, so we've at-home added a lot of hardscapes to the, to improve the attractiveness of the site, put the light poles in the parking islands, so they're not sitting right out in the parking stalls anymore, and we hope that this is a continuation of that. We'll see when they come in for their site plan. You see the landscape plan. There is a delineation for the site with landscape boundaries. They won't own an outlaw, it won't be a separate outlaw, it'll actually be leased by the developer of at-home, so all the area that they would encompass here is, will be associated with the lease designation, it's not creating of a new property line. So, all the parking around the site is available as well for the restaurant for overflow parking. Access and transportation, you can see coming into the site, there are two entrances on, or two points of access on Indian Ripple Road, a signalized access here across from Green Boulevard that enters this site, which is signalized. They'll connect here across the, through the Waffle House, and they also have a connection here once they come in to come into that site. There's a right-in, right-out only here on, further west on Indian Ripple Road that's been there for quite a long time. It's impossible to get left out of here, so that's always been a right-in, right-out. And then we have the access here off County Line, County Line Road. The access to flow, the site, again, this is what you'll see coming in. If you want to make this turn here, this is what goes in front of Waffle House. There's also, if you come down a little bit further, you come this way, and the circulation, again, is this coming around here through the drive-through. Parking's outside of the drive-through aisle, so no parking spots will be blocked in here by stacking of traffic for the drive-through. You come around this site, and then this is one-way in, so you don't know, we can try to come back around and try to jump in that drive-through. So, circulation does run counterclockwise here around the site. With that, with the signage and the 15 conditions attached to the motion for your consideration this evening, staff and planning commission unanimously recommend approval of this application. If you have any questions, either the applicant or myself will answer them after the public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, this is a public hearing tonight. If there's anyone in the audience that would like to come forward and address council on this subject, you're more than welcome to do so now. We ask that you limit your comments to three minutes unless you have up to two other people donate their time. So, does anyone here tonight wish to address council on this application? If there is, please come on up. Don't be shy. Please come up to the mic and give us your name and address, please.
It's Marie Jenkins. I live at 4101 Rushmore Place in Beaver Creek, which is right kind of behind where you're talking about. Never been to council meetings, so greetings to all of you, and I was concerned about the farmer's market and just the traffic flow. There's so much traffic already up there with the cart wash and the Starbucks, and so those were my questions. And also, the fifth-third machine, it's very congested, very hard to use. I've seen people go on, and I'm not even sure the proper way to go through it, but people go through either heading east or west. So, I just was wondering about the farmer's market, the traffic flow, and that fifth-third ATM.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
We'll see if we can get some answers. Anyone else?
Hi, my name is Marsha Pierce. I'm at 3911 East Summit Ridge Drive. I am concerned also about the traffic flow. I was able to be a part of the grand opening of the facility in Centerville when it opened up, and happened to get off the exit to go. I was going to Whole Foods, and at the time, I realized there was this huge traffic jam going in when the grand opening was going on, and for the facility in Centerville, it was really backed up. And I think there is a concern for the traffic in that area. It's already congested, and it's adding more congestion with the car wash, Starbucks, and things of that sort, and the entrance and exit seems a little confusing, so I'd like for that to be considered. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Last call. All right, seeing none, we will close the public hearing, and we will go to council input. And would we like to start with Councilmember Curran? Anything you'd like to add?
I was on the planning commission that really looked at the original site, and I thought it was really tight. Parking was tight, and ingress and egress was going to be difficult, they were going to have to cut, and I think this is a real improvement over what has happened before. I think that it's a real plus for the area, realize there's been concern expressed about congestion, how we can work that out through the planning department.
Okay. Councilmember Upton?
No comments.
No comment? No comments? Councilmember Rushing? Councilmember Van?
I just appreciate the citizens coming and hope that we ask each one of those questions. I think the farmer's market is an asset to the community, and so let staff respond to all three of those, if you would.
Okay. Vice Mayor?
I would also echo Councilmember Van and thank the ladies that came forward, especially our first speaker, who's first time attending a council meeting. Hope you're having fun. I would just like to ask you two a clarifying question. When you say you're worried about the traffic congestion, are you primarily concerned with the Indian Ripple Road congestion, or are you more concerned with some of the congestion that may come up on County Line? I just want to clarify that to see if that may help address some of your concerns.
I think it's more just getting in and out of that whole area, where the ATM is, where the Waffle House is.
Internal parking lot.
It's already very crowded.
So, the internal side, okay.
Yeah, internal.
Okay. Thank you very, I just wanted to clarify that, because there is, there are a number of different entrance and exit points for different venues within that area, so I wanted to confirm that. Thank you very much.
There probably are some ways to clarify where people are supposed to turn.
Yeah, if I could address some of those, I know if anybody's experienced the Raising Cane's in Washington Township, especially around the grand opening, it is, it's crazy. I mean, there's a lot of people who go, and it's a busy store, but you know, I think what we looked at as comparative, some of those, especially that location in Washington Township, as we're looking at this site, the stacking and the ease of access is a lot easier than if it was directly off of Indian Ripple, and it was, if this were an infill lot off of Main Thoroughfare, then you'd have the traffic possibly backing up into the main road, which is in Indian Ripple Road here, where at this case, we have the stacking around this area, it could go back in front of the Waffle House, and also, this whole parking lot area will be utilized, and they'll obviously do traffic control and hire people out there to control traffic on the grand opening weeks. But our hope here is that this would further define some of that circulation through there. Sometimes when you have a big sea of asphalt, it is, people cut across parking spots, they're not really, even the parking spots aren't delineated, so people are just kind of haphazardly driving around that site. And I think this, hopefully with the perimeters and the bumpers and the curbs, it'll help clearly define where the traffic flow is supposed to go, especially along Indian Ripple Road. And obviously, if it's stacked here, and you can't get to the Waffle House, you have an option to come down a little bit farther and this way. So, I mean, your stacking area potentially could be here, all the way through here to here, especially if this gets blocked by cars on this side, there's another option to get into that site. And so, I think when you have times like that, I know Raising Cane and Chick-fil-A does something similar, where they'll have people out there making sure that doesn't become a problem, and direct you to where you should go, and this area provides a real, way more than required stacking area for if you go a little bit further.
So, I cut across sometimes, and I do go between the fifth-third and the Waffle House to go to meetings on the other side of the parking lot. And if I were going to make a recommendation, I would urge traffic to go on beyond Waffle House and turn in there. If you could use signage to encourage that, I think that would be a smart, smart move.
I think that's ideal. I mean, when we're looking at entrance or directional signage, we really want to focus up here.
Yeah, I think that's the right way to do it.
At this location. So, if people come in, they see the entrance sign here, and then they can come into the drive, the drive-through from the west side, as opposed to trying to get in from here.
I think that would be a smart move.
Well, and I just have a question, or actually, and a comment for that, because the congestion up there, especially on the weekends, is horrendous, especially when it's nice, and if the green has any type of activity that maybe with engineering we could look at, I don't know if it's Mr. Mormon, but sometimes, you know, the lighting, maybe the...
He's there.
Thank you. Maybe the timing could be changed, or something on the weekends, that'll need to be watched after they open, after the initial, not that your newness wears out, because everyone loves you, but, but maybe we could check on that, because that will be a problem. And it is a problem now, so...
We'll work with them.
I don't see that that's going to improve, other than, I just know that the higher volume activities, when green, the green has some things, it backs up anyway, so I just think we need to be cognizant of that and with our citizens' input.
Exactly.
So, I want you to talk about the farmer's market, because I really do like the farmer's market.
Oh, yeah, right, the farmer's market. We've always been really supportive of that event up there. We've been, we, as you know, this council and previous councils have amended our regulations to be more permissive for farmer market across the city. Unfortunately, it's not our call, whether they still continue to operate the farmer's market there or not. What we will do, though, is if they do come in for a permit, we'll make sure that the location on the site is amended, so it doesn't get in the way of any traffic flow coming through, but ultimately, it's on the property owner to grant permission for them to do that up there or not, so. But if we do hear from them, we will do whatever we can to keep them open up in that location, just to make sure, things might, logistically, might have to change just because of the traffic flow changes, but we would encourage them to continue that there.
If you could just take your pointer, and I'm coming in off Indian Ripple...
May I help you go back here? Can I hear?
Right. Now, you're going to, you know, we show that you're allowed then to turn left at that first, right in front of...
Waffle House, right.
Waffle House. We got, the signs are showing, or the drive is showing two-way traffic there. Now, if you go back to the other one, can you, from that point where you come in, can you show me the direction you'd go to get in the stacking lot?
If you came in and made that first left in front of the Waffle House, you would come straight in and into the stacking lot here.
So, that's the direction?
Yep.
So, that means then that, so if it's stacked, if it's stacked even seven or eight cars back, then it's likely to block the south entrance to the parking lot.
That's why it's better for, that's why it's better for me to go.
I know, I'm just going through the whole process.
Right, if it came around, let's say it's stacked back here, and then came back all the way this way, you know, past, if you look at it from aerial again, you'd come pretty far back, you'd come back to this way, then they would have to come in this way, and this is where we would encourage the entry signage to be up here, so they come in the site and then loop around and get in the traffic, drive-through flow that way.
I guess my, the point I'm getting to, I guess, more than anything, is should we start off by saying that the entrance is on the north end versus the south end?
It'll be blocked if we don't. I truly believe that if that's not taken, I truly believe that if we don't do that, initiate this before this process starts, that it will create havoc up there, because that backs up anyways, and especially on the weekends when the Waffle House is crowded. I mean, you'll have four, or five, six cars backed up anyways, just trying to get out of there, when instead of going to the left, when they leave the parking lot out to County Line, they'll go that way, so...
If nothing else, I would think that we should be, it'd be nice to have a sign at that point on the, toward the east that says, a drive-through arrow that takes you to the north.
Up here. Okay.
If nothing else...
I don't, I want to be cautious here, again, if you look at the property boundaries, if you're talking about changing this flow, we don't, this applicant has no control over what's already established here for Waffle House, so, I mean, this is what it is, and they're not the applicant, it's part of this, so we'd have to just really do it with signage, rather than trying to make them get permission from Columbus, and if Columbus says no, it affects our lease with our tenant, then we're really at a point where it'd be hard to even accomplish any physical changes out here. So, signage for drive-through, we could allow them to have some directional signage that pushes them down here to the second entrance, because a lot of times, you're going to do that anyway, if there's anything going on over here, and that's blocked, the same thing they do with Waffle House, okay? Not everybody pulls into Waffle House right here, they'll come down and then come in this entrance back here, if the cars are stacked up at the light.
Can you put a no left turn?
Again, that's going to affect the Waffle House, so...
Yeah, but you can go on down to the other one and get into Waffle House.
Yeah, I think we would encourage this, instead of prohibiting, it's a private, it's a private road, so I mean...
For now, anyway, but you could always add that later.
And we'll, we'll look, we'll work with Equity. If something's going sideways, we'll work with them, get their permission, and try to limit some of this traffic movement, it becomes an issue. But hopefully, we can get them directed somewhere out here to get back here into that drive-through route.
Okay, thank you. Anything else from council? Seeing none, you have a motion in front of you, if anybody's so inclined.
Mr. Mayor, excuse me, I move for the purpose of taking administrative action approval of the ASRA detailed site plan for AS Properties PC 18... Oh, my, public input, read the following.
He's reading the right one, but I think it's...
Yeah, it's, yep.
Okay.
So, I need this one, you're right, I'm sorry. I should have caught that in the ASRA.
I move for the purpose of taking administrative action approval of PUD major modification for Raising Cane's Chicken Fingers, PUD 541, MOD 218, on the basis that City Council finds the facts submitted with the application, and the company materials and modifications, amendments, and supplementary conditions satisfy the standards and criteria for a PUD major modification as per Section 158 070 of the zoning code. Supplementary conditions required of this approval shall be as follows, and there are 15 listed. I further move that this motion with all conditions be fully recorded in the minutes of this council meeting.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further comments?
I just wanted to compliment you on that landscaping, thank you. Make it nice.
Okay. And we will be keeping an eye on the traffic flow, and I know we didn't answer all your questions, but we're, the council and the city's quite aware of this, of what's going on up there, so they'll keep an eye on that, see where we need to go. All right, so I do have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you.
And thanks for coming and bringing those issues up.
Oh, yeah, they're...
I mean, come in time.
It's a tough spot. Next item, public hearing, PC 18-4.
This is an application filed by Mark Plavik, 1942 River Ridge Drive, Spring Valley, Ohio, 45370. The applicant requests an administrative site plan review and approval for one acre of land to construct a new medical office building. The property is located at 4016 Indian Ripple Road, further described as Book Three, Page 10, Parcel 215, on the Green County Property Tax Atlas.
Thank you. Is there an applicant present tonight that would like to address council? Please come up and give us your name and address.
Hi.
Hi.
Mayor, council members, my name is Stephen Butler. I'm with Community Civil Engineers, and I'm representing the civil engineer for the applicant, Mr. Plavik. We have a very straightforward site. We actually came about two and a half, three years ago with a similar concept. We were trying to keep the existing house. This time, unfortunately, we're not going to be able to save the existing house, we're going to be placing a medical use with a parking lot along the side and the front. We've been working with city staff to address any concerns, and with that, I'll just leave it to city staff to make their presentation. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Evening, Mayor, members of City Council. The case you have before you is PC 18-4, the AS Properties Administrative Site Plan Review and Approval Process. Again, the applicant's looking approval for a detailed site plan for the construction of a 6,300 square foot medical office on about an acre. Projects located in southern Beaver Creek, about a mile, mile and a half east of the Greentown Center and the future Raising Cane's that we were talking about earlier this evening. Seen here is, surrounded in blue, the one acre that we're discussing this evening. It has approximately 160 feet of frontage on Indian Ripple Road. There's an existing driveway that they're not going to utilize, that'll be removed with that, but again, there's one access point to the site. This is actually part of a larger three and a half, four acre lot, and as part of this process, if approved before they would get a permit, we would require them to break the one acre out, because the front one acre is zone 001, and then the rear 2.8 acres is zone 01A, single-family residential, so there's some split zoning on that. Currently, there's a 900 square foot house on the site. Again, as the applicant stated, as part of this process, originally, they wanted to try to save that, but the new design encompasses a little bit larger of a building, and the way the site flows, that, you know, they're going to have to remove that 900 square foot house. There was some ADA issues about access to the older house and getting the appropriate ramps and grading and things like that. Again, the property is zone 001. The map was, the map hasn't been updated to reflect that one acre in the front, but again, it is zone 001. There's 001 to the west, and then 01A surrounding the rear to the north, and the northeast and northwest, and then there's 01A to the east, and then across Indian Ripple to the south, it's B2, it's the Robspear Barn, it's just directly across the street. Seen here is the proposed site plans. Seen here is the proposed site plans, because this is zone R01, there's some definitive building setback requirements for R01 districts, and all those building setbacks from the front, frontage, the rear building setback, and the two side yard setbacks have been met with this application, so there's no concerns with that. Again, they're proposing one access point to the site, which is about 10 feet from the eastern, the western property line, and this is a 25-foot access drive that's gonna go all the way to the rear of the property. It's stopped about five or 10 feet short, again, because this is all one large property, and they're splitting this one acre a lot, we're gonna require them to record an access easement, so that that 2.8 acres to the north doesn't lose all its access, because as you can see, it's surrounded by individual, single-family residential properties, so the only access would be through that access easement. In terms of parking, because it's a medical office, they are required to have three parking spaces per exam room, plus one for every employee on a larger shift, and based on the data provided by the applicant, they're required to have 29 parking spaces, and this particular plan shows 31, so they do meet the minimum requirements for parking. Also, they're required to have two ADA handicap parking spaces, they show three, so they do go above and beyond what the minimum ADA requirements will be for this site. Terms of stormwater detention, anytime we have a commercial development that, you know, they're required to detain the stormwater for any increased amount of pervious surface, they're proposing to have a stormwater detention pond up here to the north and northeast. Again, the applicant owns that, the whole property, and they retain ownership, and we're also requiring them to, when they record the access easement, we're gonna have them record a detention easement, so if in the future, you know, there's any intervention needed by the city to go in and work on that pond, if this building became vacant or something like that, you know, we have the ability to go in and maintain that stormwater detention pond on an emergency basis. Seen here is the proposed building, again, it's a 6,300 square foot building, it's about 26 feet to the top of the pitched roof, about 63 feet wide and 130 feet long, they're proposing to make the majority of the building out of red and brick, red brick and beige brick, and then around the four, all four elevations of the building, they're having a three-foot stone veneer, and this glass entryway on the front of the building. Staff sees no problem with the architecture, what they're proposing, and thinks it's a nice-looking building, it'll fit in well with the area. In terms of landscaping, this is the proposed landscaping plan that they provided, they have a good mixture of evergreen trees and shrubs, and some shade trees and shrubs out on the front of the building and along the parking lot. One of the things that staff asked them to do before we got to planning commission, and they accommodated us with that, is adding extra landscaping here along this eastern edge of the parking lot, because there is residential back here, and we wanted to make sure that any parking lots that would come in, or any cars that would come in the parking lot, if it's after hours, or, you know, starting to get dark, that their headlights wouldn't shine, and we can minimize that impact on the neighbors to the east. A few selected conditions in your resolution, I'm sorry, in your motion for your consideration, one is that they're required to adhere to ground signage for R01, they do show one ground sign, and it's located out here, but we didn't get any details, so we wanted to make sure that they do adhere to that, which is four feet height max, and they can't have it within 50 feet of any residential properties. Also, sorry, that they can't change the exterior of the building, we didn't want to make sure that they didn't come and go and paint any brick without any prior approval of planning commission or city council or both. And also, one, because of the residential properties to the north and to the east and west, we require that they limit exterior construction hours to 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM Monday through Saturday, so they're not out there grading at 4:30 or 5:00 in the morning. Planning commission staff both recommend approval of the applicant's request, and I am here to answer any questions following the public hearing, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, this is a public hearing, is there anyone present this evening that would like to address council on this application? Anyone? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing. It's now time for council input, council member literal.
Randy.
I just have a quick question for follow-up for future, as the parking lot goes further back.
Yes, ma'am.
And you said it's, that's zone residential?
It's currently zone R1A, yeah.
So if those additional two acres, and you said you were gonna have them sign something?
When we, as part of creating this one acre lot, they're gonna record a access easement, so anybody that needed to get back into that lot, whether, you know, actually the owner, I mean, the applicant still owns both, and he can, he plans on continuing to own both, but even if he should sell, we only want to provide, make sure that there's access in perpetuity.
Okay, that's my main concern, because of the way that lot, that's just not a really good.
It's a challenging lot, I mean, being 90 feet, or 190 feet wide and 1,000-plus feet deep, I mean.
And I also don't like that it's residential on the north and south side of it, or, I'm sorry, east and west.
And that's why, you know, back in 2014, we'd have, rather than trying to zone it for commercial, you know, we had them rezone it for R01, which is, you know, a good transition between the residential to the north and commercial in the south.
We, this property's been before us before.
Right.
That's why it's, okay, thank you for that.
Yes, ma'am.
Council member Rush.
Thank you for the presentation, being new and not knowing the nuances of our zoning code, are there hours restriction for the actual operation of what's gonna be at the site in our zoning code, or?
No, we don't have any, anything in the code anywhere that says you can't run a business after a certain amount of hours, I mean, there are certain types of businesses where we have conditional uses, but this, you know, a doctor's office or medical office isn't a conditional use within this, with this particular zoning district, if it were, you know, then there would be some opportunity administratively to add them, but there's nothing in the zoning code for straight R01.
Sure, I was just curious, thank you.
Council member Van?
I have no questions.
Council member Upton?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, just, I guess, a quick question in regards to the detention pond, that I think is kinda towards the back of the property there.
Right.
I can't remember, is that where it was?
Yeah, it's actually to the northeast of the building, and it will go on some of this three-point, or 2.8 acre property.
So it's not gonna impact anything as far as the wetlands or the?
No, I mean, it'll be designed and engineered, so that, you know, it's, you know, acquiring all the extra stormwater runoff from this, the added impervious surface, but not, you know.
Okay, thank you.
Council member Carr.
Nothing this time, your honor.
Last mayor?
No questions.
All right, well, I do have a couple. To start with, why are we separating into two lots?
The land use plan had highlighted the southern one acre as commercial or, actually, residential or neighborhood community commercial, and then the rear 2.8 acres was classified as single-family low-density use on the land plan, so we wanted to make sure that we keep the front acre compliant when we went and did the rezoning, rather than the entire 3.8 acres as R01.
But there's no, other than that, there's no requirement, there wouldn't be any necessarily requirement to change it if you have one owner, correct?
That's correct, I mean, there, I mean, other than, there's a condition that requires them to create that one acre.
What, in your, in this?
In the proposed motion.
Right, but nothing in our code that says that happens. All right, so that leads me then to the fact that when you do separate, now you create a lot in the back that is, in essence, a totally non-conforming lot, not only you provide for some access, but now there's no access then for utilities, you don't have, you know, you couldn't, somebody else is not gonna be able to buy it and build on it at any reasonable cost because of the utilities.
Well, we are requiring them to extend the utility, at least a utility easement along that, so that they can get utilities into the back.
So you're gonna make, allow it so they can get water, sewer, electric, and gas all down through there on an easement?
Yes, they'll have the utility easement.
Okay. So I guess my follow-up to that is, if you had a condition that said you're rezoning this piece of property, or you're approving this as, this ASRA, why couldn't you include a condition that says the use is limited to the first front acre, or something to that effect, so that, I have a concern about separating the property and creating a non-conforming lot. And that's my only issue, is to where, what is this land, not tomorrow, or not next week, but 10 years from now, when somebody comes in and says, we wanna do something with this land, I have a little bit of a concern about, because this, all, that whole stretch, but abuts a whole lot of residential houses.
Right.
And knowing that Ohio says you can use land for whatever's reasonable, it makes it a little tough. I would love to see this myself, I would love to see this as still one parcel, but limit it, limit the development to the front X number of feet, whatever that is.
I mean, if.
And not put an easement in it, and now that land is part of this, and nobody else is gonna be able to buy it, because there's no access to it. I would rather not see the easement going back to that land. I mean, I can, this can stay green space, if he wants to build a house back there himself, then that's one thing, but I would rather not create a non-conforming lot for somebody to want to use in the future.
So, so why is it non-conforming?
Well, it has no road frontage.
But he's provided a driveway through the other property.
That's not something that we would generally like to do. I mean, it creates a lot with no road frontage.
Flag lot, basically referred to as a flag lot, like a flagpole, that's really what it is, and I think the mayor does raise some valid concerns, that odds, you know, it'll be tough to ever develop that as residential.
So, anyway, that's a thought. And the other is the design of the building, and if we can put that picture back up there, the front face, and I guess to a certain degree, we're talking about residential office zoning, and as we all know, residential office means that the building should look at, at least the face of the building should resemble a residence, and so the south face is, you know, somewhere between a residence and a church, maybe, but as far as resemblance. I think the use is just right for there, I mean, I don't have any problem with the use, I think it needs to be filled in, I'd much rather have this than try to reuse that house, I mean, we did that, went through that process once before, the house should not stay. So I'm not as concerned about the design of the building, even though it's, to me, it's not really that residential, but I am still concerned with dividing the lot. I would like to ask the applicant if they have any thoughts on that issue, anybody have a thought on not breaking that lot? Is that okay to ask him?
Good evening, council, my name's Mark, I'm the applicant, and I think you've raised some very good questions. The history of this has all been done with only this team of city planners, which I think is a superb team supporting our city, number one. They have advised us to seek an R01 application for the first acre, for the purpose of producing a beautiful new medical office for this part of Beaver Creek. The apologies to you with your feedback on the front of the church, it's not meant to look like a church, that's more of a architectural problem because of the drawing that was just submitted recently, and so the missing link to that photograph is a lot of stonework that'll be very high-quality, full stone, not facade, meaning fascia stone, and therefore the high quality and the high expense that we will be purchasing to make that look like a beautiful, warm front, unfortunately, is not in that picture, so that's a letdown for us, but, when again, I think is beautiful about our team of city planners, and I mean the whole team, and I've talked to them for three straight years now, their oversight of all these little details is superb, so they've already asked us these questions, they've asked the team, the architectural team, the civil engineering team, and even the potential builder from Cincinnati, who's been building for 55 years with their background in building, commercial buildings and medical offices and banks throughout southwest Ohio. I think this will be a great addition to the neighborhood, number one, I think it'll be a great use for one acre of property, and because they've always led us, before we made any presentations to them privately in our planning sessions, they've always given us such great guidance to follow all of the restrictions and laws and rules and codes, that I believe those are being adhered, or they wouldn't have given you their approval. Think regarding your access point, the personal ownership of this, used to be four acres, but as you know, there was a four-lane road that came in there recently, so we lost a little bit of the acreage. It's owned by a husband and wife, my wife is a neurologist, Dr. Svetich, she's been practicing, and she's a board-certified neurologist since 1989, her whole career's been dreaming of just owning a little doctor's office, and this particular driveway's probably not gonna have any use unless we come back to the city council after the board, the planning team advises us what to do next, but we don't have any direct answers for your question of what's gonna go beyond the first 130 feet of the driveway, but it has to be probably continuous, it has to be probably residential, based on advice I've already received from the team that I've been listening to, and there's no dilemma there, because it's a neighborhood with residences, and because of all the standing laws that would always protect our fine city, as well as my neighbors, they don't like to lose their backyard, we've had some commentary from them in previous meetings, we're gonna constantly fit into the neighborhood perfectly, because I already know all my neighbors, as I've been cleaning up the property for the last 10 years, and again, whatever fits there probably will make sense for our fine community, as we keep forging our way future to make it a beautiful city, and I think with all due respect, when you have 165 feet going from the east to the west, and you can put any small residence in the middle of that space, again, there's logical people that are working diligently with all their tools and certifications and background and planning, they're gonna keep advising us properly, and I think, I think that's really the answer to your question, it would be a future continuous driveway that would have to meet the boards, the planning board's advice and recommendation thoughtfulness first, before we even spend any money drawing a future idea, or a future use of extending that driveway, and therefore, again, because you know them better than I do, and you've seen their work every single month, when they bring you things, they either approve or have questions about what they're seeking approval on, they're gonna do it with all their experience, again, to make our city better and better and better, and because we're blessed with a little bit of acreage, they've already advised us what the potential use, if you did extend that driveway further north, beyond the first 130 feet, and again, I think with all due respect, they're gonna do the right thing for everybody involved, because they've already limited us in our mindset, whatever we're thinking or dreaming of, so we've always limited our potential use for those spaces, and we did mention at the last meeting we were here, I think, we talked about growing some blueberries back there, that's pretty green, so you did bring that up, that's a good idea, my wife calls them brain berries, so we would hope that you would see that as some direct commentary to your good questions, again, they are very good questions, but again, I would deter all my advice to these gentlemen, sometimes Sanders here, so the team always has good response to these things, so we thought them out fully, and trying to, again, do better and better, again, our first presentation before we didn't start our business, Healthy Brain Neurology, was to keep that old building, now we've come to our senses and said, how can we make the neighborhood better, and that's why we've decided to demote, so I hope that answers your questions.
No, it certainly does, and I concur 100% that we have a fantastic staff, and they try to make things work whenever they can. I'm simply raising the question of not what your intentions are, because I think the staff knows that, and you've expressed them as well. My only concern is what the intentions are of somebody 10, 15 years down the road, and so that's why I raised the issue, and so, and it may not be possible, and I'm gonna ask staff to correct me where I'm wrong, because it may not be possible to actually zone a piece of a land and not the whole parcel.
So historically, Mayor, with all due respect, this land has been rezoned, based on the advice of everybody in Beaver Creek that I met before tonight, and at the moment, the zoning was made for the purpose of building a little doctor's office, it's been the dream of this immigrant doctor who came to America in 1989 to be a little benefit to the community, and build a private practice in medicine, that was always her dream, so as a young person, she's not dreaming of doing anything there for the next 30 years but practice medicine. She has 5,000 patients, she did practice in Beaver Creek from 2007 to 2016, and she's just trying to return, we currently opened our business in January of 2016 in Centerville, because we're renting, but there is no other dream for this person who's a medically-trained, board-certified neurologist with specialties in EMG, headaches, and migraines, to do anything else with her life, because that's her training, that's actually all that she does. life because that's her training, that's actually all that she does. So she doesn't have any other plans to go anywhere, to move anywhere. She did immigrate from Europe to do this, to be really a world-class neurologist. So there is no other idea to use the space. The, the building opens at 8:00 AM in the morning, it closes at 4:30 at night. So there's, there's probably a total of 20 cars that will come on our property daily for the purpose of seeing this neurologist, Healthy Brain Neurology. So I think the, the board of planning team has really, again, found a perfect way to do the preparation. And again, I would be happy to answer any questions if you have them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. McGrath. And I may be, it may be a mute issue because maybe we can't zone a piece of a lot. Okay? Can you clarify that a little bit?
Yeah, I'll, I'll kind of, listen to Playback was saying, we came, what Randy said earlier, the Landy's plan splits the parcel, but there are no parcel lines where the uses get declassified. So if you look at the Landy's plan, you've got office here along the Inter ripple corridor planning area, and this is a land used for yellow, low-density residential behind it. No immediate plans, we're very cautious on what's going to happen in the back part. I mean, we're not looking at three units break or we've said, advised probably an estate lot or something like that would be the only thing that makes sense, put somebody coming in and out of there. Our dilemma was, and our concern was exactly yours, was when they rezoned this to R-01, they only rezoned the front acre, which is consistent with the Landy's plan classification for that property. Zoning is a lot easier to implement on a parcel-by-parcel basis. So having the property rezoned, if you talk to even the auditor or anybody who does any assessments on the property in terms of taxes and values, the property should be defined by the zoning district in which it's in. So the reason it was required to be split was because this was, this one acre was rezoned R-01. In order to define that legal description for the zoning area, there was a requirement that the lot be split. Now, it's not absolutely essential, but again, there's some logistical issues if it's, if it's one parcel has two separate zoning districts on it. Because again, as Randy mentioned, the back is R-01A, the front is R-01, and the reason for the partial split was to delineate those two zoning districts.
Yeah, I mean, I think, Mayor, the, you know, as the staff report notes, I, I think if you were to not split the lot, it is more likely than you are effectively providing a business use for the remaining portion. So what Ms. McGrath and, and planning, Randy and Sandra are recommending is by splitting it off, you are effectively defining the one, the one acre. And I think you have a better position to argue that should there be another attempt to put another business in the back, especially with respect to how, I mean, I haven't walked the property, but it's pretty obvious that this is a backyard to a number of pieces of property. I think if, you know, for residential use back there, that's one thing, but multiple businesses would, I think you'd have more of a, of an issue doing that. So I think subdividing it as is provided for is one of the conditions that has to be split off and that'll be its own separate lot.
Correct. The original discussions were to PUD or something like that for the whole property. But again, the uncertainty, we don't, we didn't want to speculative, we'd be zoning anything in that sensitive area that there's, that's back there, that's wooded between the lots. We wanted to clearly define what the, where we are, what we're moving forward with. Honestly, the R-01 was consistent with the Landy's plan. We didn't want to rezone the whole property R-01 and open up more opportunities for some businesses further back into that residential neighborhood. So we figured the most restrictive zoning that could be on there that would protect the neighbors is the exact zoning that they have on their properties right now that requires 20,000 square foot lots, requires 50-foot rear yard setbacks. So the, the existing zoning on there is, is a level of protection not to try to guess what'll happen in the future, but be able to have that as the fallback for what, if anything can happen on that property.
Well, and it, and it does, it does require a complete new analysis of does that, you know, within the zoning code, does that make sense? So it's not a automatic, if it was a PUD, you effectively have set up some criteria by which if they meet certain requirements, they're going to get their use, whereas this is going to require a full rezoning, which will be the highest and most difficult form of, of review for any property owner. And based upon, again, I understand why the, you know, I sat through planning on this is why it's the one acre, the cutoff. I mean, I think I'd be a little more concerned if they'd split that halfway through when the use really is only for, I mean, the use is being provided is really using the one acre. There's a little bit of drainage retention on, onto the residential portion, but I don't, I don't see that as any, any problem because that certainly is not going, in fact, that just uses up some of the residential, doesn't convert it to business.
Okay, so if somebody wants to go back in there and build a house next year, and he's got detention, part of the detention is on that land.
Correct.
We have nothing to prevent the person that builds the house from filling in that detention, do we?
There will be required detention easement on that property. He will plat, subdivide the whole area so the easement will run with the land.
Okay. Very good.
And I, your concerns are same as ours, it's just, it's just an impossible lot. We wanted, what's the best protection moving forward? And we thought it was just to keep it the way it's owned now.
Maybe, maybe they'll decide to, you said it was a detention, so that the water will stay there. So maybe they'll make, is detention, retention?
There'll be detention, drive.
Retention? So it's going to be a permanent pond?
No, it'll be detention pond, it'll only, it'll hold the water and then release the water out.
I was just going to say that, you know, that he, he could in, in a future year decide to make a cute little park back there for meditation or for quiet, you know, those kind of things and-
Yeah, there's certain things that-
Those kind of things could be on the, the residential property, no problem at all.
Yeah, I don't really see, again, I think the-
Mostly for his patients.
The layout and the access will define the future use of the property. And I don't see anybody really doing anything. We're not going to allow for a PUD for a lot of houses to come through, a parking lot to get out the Inter ripple road. So we've had these discussions with the owner of the property, Mr. Playback, and there's a sense of reason what was there, but we didn't want to get too speculative at this point and have any unintended consequences for what we did on that back property. We figured we'd handle it as they came in with interest.
Well, again, if, if it was feasible to, to not split it, it would actually save the applicant money because he would not have to put in that drive. But anyway, I, I understand that it's probably in the best interest to split it in, in order to clarify the zoning. So with that said, any other comments by Council? Do I have a motion?
I would move for the approval of PC, for, for the purpose of taking administrative action, approval of an ASRA, A-S-R-A, detailed site plan for AS properties, PC 18-4, on the basis that City Council finds the facts submitted with the application and the company materials and modifications, amendments and supplementary conditions satisfy the standards and criteria for the ASRA detailed site plan as per 158 dot 083 of the zoning code. Supplementary conditions required for this approval shall be as follows, which are 18. I further move that this motion with all its conditions be fully recorded in the minutes of this city council meeting.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Moving on, ordinance 18-03.
This is a third reading of an ordinance amending ordinances 08-12 and 09-32, CPUD 08-1 Hindu Temple and ordinance 96-33, RPUD 96-1 Brookstone, to rezone 3.002 acres, further described as Book Four, Page Four, Parcel 29 on the Green County Property Tax Atlas, to see CPUD 08-1.
Thank you. This is the third reading of this ordinance. It is sponsored by Vice Mayor Garcia. Any comments on, by Council? Vice Mayor?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve ordinance 18-03.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve ordinance 18-03. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Next, resolution 18-18.
This is a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with the Green County engineer for the project known as the collective paving for 2018.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. Good evening again. This resolution is for us to enter into an agreement with Green County as part of the annual resurfacing program run through Green County Engineer's Office. This program allows several jurisdictions, including ours, to combine our resurfacing programs in with the county to get better asphalt prices by collective bid, basically getting us bulk prices for our bid. With that, we did have, the county engineer did open bids on March 15th of this year already, and with that, they have sent us the request entered into an agreement. Our program this year is for, our base program, which is in green up there on the slide, and also it's on our website too, if there's questions and people would like to see this or members of council would like to see this too, in better detail, it's on our website on the resurfacing program webpage. There are 10.77 miles in the base program, which is in green, and in red is the alternate program, which we will do if tonnage is coming a little lighter than what we anticipate with our estimate this year. And that program is 8.9, or 8.95 miles of alternate streets, and we can add as we have money available after the base program is completed. So with that, I will answer some questions if anybody has any.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions?
Just a great opportunity for us to collaborate again with our other partners. So always to save money and to get more miles, I think that's a great opportunity for-
Absolutely.
Not only the entities, but as well as our citizens. So thank you for that.
And second those comments, but also to add, I'm so thankful to see that we have a plan for if resources become available, you know, not just, here's what we're going after, you know, it's, it's so crucial to have that secondary plan and appreciate you having the foresight on that.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Do I have a motion?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve resolution 18-18. All in favor, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next, resolution 18-19.
This is a resolution to declare the necessity and intent to acquire fee simple interest in certain parcels or real estate and other property interests owned by the estate of Andrew E. Merits, AKA Andrew Elmer Merits, with interest by others for the purpose of establishing off-street parking facility in the city of Beaver Creek, Ohio.
Do we need any clarification?
Uh, very simply, Mr. Merritt unfortunately passed away approximately four years ago, almost exactly. His house has been abandoned. I did attach, I believe, about 12 photos. As Council knows, it has deteriorated substantially, and this is the first step of resolution of necessity followed by an ordinance, which will be three readings.
Okay, thank you. Any comments by Council? Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion to approve resolution 18-19.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve resolution -19. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next, ordinance 18-05.
This is an ordinance to appropriate the public use, all right title and interest in a certain parcel of property located at 3870 South U Street, Beaver Creek, Ohio, for the purpose of acquiring simple, fee simple interest of an off-street parking facility in the city of Beaver Creek, Ohio.
Thank you. And Mr. McHugh, this is an attachment to, in essence, attached to the resolution.
Correct. This is the part, the second step. This will be the three readings, 30 days.
Aye. Any comments by Council? Do I have a motion?
I would move for approval of 18-05 and move it on to the second and third reading.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve ordinance 18-05, moving it on to the second and third reading. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next, decision items. This is, was put on the agenda because Councilmember Van has been working on something that I'm going to turn it over to her for a minute. But the, the question becomes, and we need to discuss tonight, as to whether or not the city should be a sponsor of this event or, or whether it should just be a, an outside sponsorship. And if, if members of city council or city staff wish to be present, then that's up to them. So with that, if you could give a, a brief overview, I know Councilmember Van, you passed out your agenda, or proposed agenda that you're working on.
Tentative, we're still confirming speakers. We've had a lot of, of citizens come forward and they're very anxious about the change that medical marijuana will place on our city for a lot of different reasons. And it's a significant interest and it will make a big change in our, in our community. So I think it's, it behooves us as a city to be proactive than, rather than just wait for a problem to show up and, and then have to be responsive to an incident or a problem. And we might as well provide the leadership because our citizens have asked us to provide that leadership. My, my experience in community development, when I worked for cities, is if you give the citizens the tools they need, the information they need, lots of times they'll get prepared and they'll do the right thing, and then you just save problems. And so I think it's, it's, it's really the right thing for the city to help with this. I, I think that's a, a very good thing. It's a very complicated type, topic. There's going to be impacts to every business in town, there's going to be impacts to the school, there's going to be impacts to all the families. It's just a, a complex thing, the types of things. So I've proposed that we have an informational meeting just so people can better understand what it means to have medical marijuana. The voters in Ohio have said that we'll have medical marijuana, but what does it mean to Beaver Creek? What does it mean to Ohio? So if, if, if the city's going to be a sponsor, then I will include that. There's a draft little flyer that has been drawn up that could be used, that would include the logo on it. The types of things that we're going to talk about, I think that for the city staff, it would be, and the township staff, it would just be clarification of what's happened to date. I mean, we've had applications, what's the status of those, what's the status of our There are a few other things that we could do as a city to protect ourselves. There's ordinances that, that prohibit using alcohol walking down the street, or we could do a similar ordinance that talks about where marijuana could be used, whether for medical or more recreational purposes. I mean, there's a few other things that we could do, but I don't think we'll bring those up in this, in this forum. I just think that, that people want to know the status of what's going on and how it relates to our city. So I've only asked the city manager and the township administrator to just talk about what the status of our current applications are and, and what, what the probability of something happened with, you know, just the current status. So that will be a short presentation. The next section is having people from, from the medical or, or the university to talk about what we're talking about. Are we talking about pills? Are we talking about smoking? Are we talking about creams? Are we talking about vapor? Just give us the information. What are we talking about? There's a significant situation, as I've called to ask doctors to come and talk, most of them haven't had that training because it's an illegal drug, so they don't even have it in their toolbox right now. So, so who- So who is going, who is going to be prescribing medical marijuana, and how is the state going to control whether these are fly-by-night people or if they're, it's a real deal? So those specialists, those PhDs and important people will be explaining the current status of those, those situations, just so that we can plan ahead. I've got several people lined up to talk about, then, so I've got it divined into several parts. So the first part's just facts of where we are, the second is just facts about medical marijuana, third part is businesses, it would behoove them to think about their personnel policies and how they're going to handle their workforce, if they need to make some changes according to other states that already have it, there's some wise choices that could be made. And we've got a speaker that we're trying to get, who will, there will be a course in Xenia for Green County in June, but for this, it'll just be a Cliff Notes of these are the 10 things, or whatever number of things that all the businesses might find it very important to be aware of. And then the fourth part is how it affects our kids and families. The mental health board and the schools, and the mental health guy from Green County Education Center will come and talk about marijuana and kids, and how important it is for us to be smart. I just heard a story this weekend about a child who saw her grandma get a gummy bear out of the top shelf of the cupboard, and so the little three-year-old decided, you know, I like gummy bears, I think I'll go up and get those. Well, the grandmother was taking, so it wasn't in Ohio, but the grandmother was taking them because she needed them for some medical reason, and that's how she ate them. Well, the kid overdosed and had to be taken to the emergency room. So it's just, you just have to know what these things are and just educate our population and be smart. It'll be interesting for our residents to know more about the prevention efforts that go on in our schools. We've got a good PACS program, the DARE program's good, the peer listening program's good, and I think having Dr. Callahan come from the Green County Education Center and talk about the mental health programs that are available in our school districts will be good. And then Rick Peralis has agreed to come and talk about legislation that they're thinking about in Columbus, so that'll be a, as of the end of April, update on what's in the pipes. So I would recommend, I think it is a nice thing for us to be a sponsor of this, so I would hope you all would. I would hope you would come and meet people at the door and welcome them, and pass out agendas.
Okay.
It's going to be at a city facility, it looks like it's a, a city thing, I think it would be good if it was city-sponsored, so I would, I would urge you to vote yes.
Okay. All right, well, thank you. The, and the, the issue that I have, and you kind of hit upon it real briefly, you said Representative Peralis was going to be there to try to bring us, bring people up to date on where they're at and what progress they're making. Therein lies the, my concern, is that we don't know what the state's going to do. You know, to try to give people answers to things that we have no control over, I think it gives false hope sometimes.
I also thought it was good for Rick Peralis to sit and listen to these questions where we bring him up, so that he would know the issues that, that we need to be thinking about. I thought that was a healthy, healthy thing to be doing, too.
Again, I believe Rick Peralis being in that position that he's in is, would be, would be wise for him to hear all the input he can hear. I do agree with that.
And they have a new, and they have a brand-new marijuana control board, or something that's made a lot of decisions that can be communicated, because I think the average person doesn't know, there are a lot of laws that have been put in place since that was been passed by the voters, I mean, a lot, and so they're just fine-tuning at this point. So just talking about the, the laws that have been put into place, because when I was looking on the, on the website, it keeps referring to Ohio code, so there's a lot of things where it says, you want to know more about this, go to Ohio code, and it's right in the, in the commission's rules. So a lot of things have already been passed.
Okay. So the, have the school board on board?
The speakers, I've only talked to one school board member, I was kind of waiting to see where we were at. One school board member is planning to be there, the speakers from the school are planning to be there. Lisa, Lisa Cron has RSVP'd, I talked to Tim Callahan this morning, we haven't defined exactly what he's going to talk about, but he's on board. Andrea Huff is on board. Those people are all on board.
All right. Well, before I finish, anybody else have any comments?
I have a couple, Mayor.
Councilman Van, I think, and I communicated this to you, what I would prefer to see, I'd like to, I have no problem with the city of Beaver Creek being a part of it, but I would really like to see Green County Health and the Mental Health Board symbols at the top of this letter, so if we're going to have this, that there be a joint, because each one of them are a component part of this issue, if we're going to move ahead, I think that would be very, very helpful. I don't think it should be one entity, because obviously, as you know, the district size for this, that the state uses for, for the applications that we have, it takes in a pretty wide area, I know, even beyond maybe Green County. But I would, I would recommend that, number one, and number two would just be a suggestion in terms of process. It seems like you put a lot of, a lot of work in this, and I congratulate you for it, but I think you should have brought it to the council as a concept, and then if the council approved it, then you get a hold of these people and say, look, the mayor and the council have agreed, and we're going to have these partners, and I'm going to proceed per direction of the council to call Mr. So-and-so, Mrs. So-and-so, whoever, and have them participate with other members. It just seemed to me like...
The timing is, is when we, when the, when the citizens pulled me in and asked, asked me to help, help get this accomplished.
Yeah.
We, we looked at how hard it is, if we don't do it, it's good to do it the fifth, fifth Monday of April, because we normally don't have a meeting on the fifth Monday of April. And once you get to May, then schools are out, there's graduation, there's just so many things going on, and then comes June, and everybody's doing vacations, so there, it was, it was the timing of, this is an important issue, and we want, we want it to be available to people when they're still available to be learning about it, and the summer is not the best time to be trying to...
I understand.
And so, so that's, that's how, that's how this, that's how the scheduling got the way it was. I tried to reach out by email, but we need to have it be a formal decision, so here we are.
What about the idea of the three entities sponsoring this?
Yeah, the mental...
You get a hold of the Board of Health, and talk to Doc, and you go to the Mental Health Board.
The Mental Health Board...
So if this is proceeding ahead, is with the individuals that you've shared with us that are going to be, who have been tentatively asked, personally myself, I'd be more comfortable. I, I don't like it to see it focused just on us, because, as you all know, the...
It's got the Mental Health logo on here, too, and I would be glad to also have the...
Well, I'd like to have it at the top.
It is, it's right there at the top.
I'm sorry, I guess I'm, I'm looking at the bottom here, pardon me.
I just, I just put a little teeny, it's, it's going to be a big, it's going to be a, I, I put the sample of the, the flyer down here, and, and I would be glad to talk to the Board of Health about it.
Oh, that's the page?
Yeah, just give me a sample of the...
I'm sorry, I didn't see it that way.
And I just, yeah, they're, they're right at the top with us, and I'd be glad, I think it's a good idea to ask the Board of Health.
The Board of Health...
They haven't, they haven't been involved in so much in Green County, and I would be glad to reach out, because I know that Greta works with them hand-in-hand all the time, but they focus a lot of their things on other things, but this is important to them, too, so I would not be surprised if they wouldn't be willing to help. I'd be glad to reach out and do that.
Yeah, I'd like to see the, all three of them be participants with this, if this is going to be successful, but I, I think it's more than just, just, just the city, because the applicants are in a much broader area.
Well, we, we are blessed to live in a city that is full of, of highly educated people who want to know facts, and they want to know what's going on, and so our population will come to be informed and educated, and, and maybe in a different community, they wouldn't be quite as likely to do that. I'm just, that's just the kind of community we live in, so I would expect people to be welcoming the opportunity to, to learn and, and be exposed to facts that are brought to us by people who are in the position to be making decisions.
And I think, yeah, Mr. Mayor, I mean, Councilmember Van, if you could remind me, I believe this all came about as your role also on the Mental Health Recovery Board...
I do, I do sit on that board, so I know, because I, I get it from that angle, too.
And from what I remember, a lot of this, a lot of this scheduling and a lot of this commitment or tentative commitments from speakers was part of your role in the Mental Health Recovery Board, so really what we're here tonight is to talk about whether or not council wants to be involved with this, because I believe that this, will this still go forward even if council does not want to be a sponsor? So I think that's, this is another entity, really, that you're planning this with, and you're bringing this to the opportunity of council to, and I appreciate that. I, this looks, I really think you've put together a very well-rounded presentation. I think you addressed my one concern, or one of my concerns that I had at the very beginning, was that alerting citizens that we have not made a decision yet, we're still in a holding pattern, waiting on the state.
And that's, and that's what we're going to just clarify right up front, we're just going to say that.
And I think that's great, because even if it turns out that the city does not get anything, the state does not award us anything, or whatever decision we make in the future, the fact that we border other cities that will make a different decision or maybe award us something different, I think is good for just residents to know, you may live in the city of Beaver Creek, but you may face this problem either with the township, or with Xenia, or wherever your border county lines are, so. But I appreciate that you would address upfront the fact that we're still in, we're still waiting to hear more from the state before council comes together again to make any decisions.
Any other comments?
I guess maybe a clarifying point, just a definition of terms. You're asking for sponsorship?
No, I'm just asking, I just thought it would be, I thought it would be credible for the city to be nice...
More of an endorsement?
Yeah, yeah, to say, yeah, we want to, and I thought, I thought actually, because we've had so many citizens come forward, you actually might like to be there to say, citizens, I care enough about it to have brought this to before you. I actually thought you'd like to do that, so.
Certainly.
I was just giving you the opportunity.
I think we did do that, just a month or so ago, we had citizens in here, I mean, they came in a large number of...
But this is, this is an educational thing. I mean, it's a different, it's a different animal. It's not a public hearing for anything that specifically the city's going to do, it's more of an educational opportunity.
I guess my only concern with, with the city being an endorser, for lack of a better term, is kind of around the content of the information, not that it's, not that I don't think it's good information, because the more information for everybody, the better, but if for some reason something proves to be infactual, and the city has endorsed this and stands behind it...
We're not endorsing, we're just providing the opportunity for, for this information to come forward, and, and each, each PhD person that talks, or each, each professional, but I was just, when I, when I was going through, I was going, oh, my goodness, a lot of these people are very, very smart. They'll, they'll have to stand on their own feet, we are only the convener, and so we'll make it clear that we are only the convener. We are not, we, we do not endorse what any single person says, we are only the convener, we're just trying to help our citizens be smart and know what, what people in Ohio think about the laws that are coming forward, because it's a little different. Ohio law is a little different than what they might have rumor of from Colorado, or Oregon, or someplace else, and, and so the people who are going to speak will know Ohio law and what's coming forward.
Going back to Mr. Mayor's comment, you know, just a couple months ago, we did have an informational meeting here in council chambers, do you see that as an extension of this?
Which meeting, which meeting was that, when we were talking about the zoning?
December, yeah, December 14th.
That was only, that was only zoning for...
No, 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 no. We had, we had the public citizens group came in here, and we went over everything we knew about, in addition to telling them where we were with our zoning, which is what you're wanting us to do now with this as well. In essence, you're only wanting the city to tell the public where we are at as a city, which is the same as...
And it's, that'll just be totally a repeat.
Well, and that's why I'm saying, should the city even worry about doing this right now or not? And that's why I wanted it to be discussed here, so.
But, but they, they'll be able to announce how the businesses can get prepared, will bring awareness to how the schools are doing things, or could enrich what they're doing. I mean, there's some, some things that are going to be positive from this.
I have no doubt there'll be things that are positive from it, that's, but I still say so many of them are going to be speculative, because nobody yet knows.
No, they aren't.
Nobody knows what the final law is going to be. We should have already had our award if we were going to get it, okay? When we, all these things are, they're talking even now about rescinding the whole thing at the state. I mean, I don't think that'll happen, but there's talk about it.
Yeah, but well, the state voters have approved to have medical marijuana, so it's not speculative that we're not going to have it in the region, and it's not speculative that it's not going to impact our businesses, and it's not speculative that it's going, you know, affect our schools, so talking about these topics is important.
Okay. Anyone else?
I, I was just going to say, for the sake of, you know, we were, myself was going to be very brief on to where we are. At the beginning of this, Councilmember Van had asked me, or staff and I agreed just to, for myself to do it, just to, you know, quick brief, I wouldn't imagine five, five minutes, really, just to say this is where we are. The only other thing, whether or not we sponsor it, makes a difference on what room we use. I will be right up front with that. The one room that's carpeted is, are for nonprofits, which of course, the other organization she's representing, if we do not sponsor it, or we're not involved in it, you know, whatever word you're looking for to sponsor it, that would be the room we'd be able to utilize. Now, I'm not sure on the attendance, it can hold 40 to 50 chairs set up straight, and of course, you know, we'll find out more information how many we'll attend. If we're quote-unquote sponsoring this, so to speak, whatever word you want to utilize, we're in it, we will be able to use the other room that has the safe in it, with the, you know, the jump, the wood floor, because we only use that for city purposes. So if it's used as a sponsorship, we would be able to, if there was 80 people showed up, the one room would not be able to hold that many. So that's just another thing for your consideration, that would be the only difference of sponsorship or non-sponsorship for the use of the actual facilities.
All right, how about...
And Kettering's hosting a workshop for businesses next, the Monday before this.
And I was just going, that's the exact word I was going to use, is versus sponsorship. How about we, if we went the direction to say the city would, would host the gathering of these other entities, the Mental Health Board, or, I mean, whatever these entities are, that the city will host it by providing a space for them to meet.
Right.
And advertising on our website that the meeting's going to exist. And so now we are just hosting a mix of people to be able to speak. I think I could, I think that's reasonable.
And a press release, Councilwoman? Press release by the Board of Health, the Director of MR?
I haven't talked to the Board of Health yet, because, because, because they typically in Green County...
Yeah, well, that would be nice, just to see a personal opinion.
And I will work on that, I think I will try to get that, yeah. I will get that.
But I think the hosting idea sounds good to me, personally.
That would cover the large space, then?
I think so, yeah.
Yeah. All right, do I have a motion to, of any sort?
I would move to approve.
What we have?
I'd like to make a motion to host, to be a host city for this event, for those already who have RSVP'd to Councilwoman Van, so that they have an opportunity to have a location, so that this meeting can...
There's some, there's a few...
Can be held.
There, there are a couple other invitations out... There, there are a couple of other invitations out, so this plus a couple more-
Regardless, I make a motion to host.
Second. I have a motion and a second, too. It's on the table, I think we all know what it says. All in favor, signal by by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. All right. City managers report.
Thank you, Mayor. First slide was dealing with the resurfacing, which we touched on today. We've heard reports with the county, and we will be having a pre-construction meeting this week, April 12th, to find out when crews can begin the resurfacing work. So that's kind of set, setting up the pins to be able to knock them down. So we'll, as we find more information and where we're starting, of course, we'll communicate that out, so people can be aware of resurfacing of their streets. Again, ten point seven seven miles, and we did put this on our Facebook page, the link to the website, so people, it's under engineering, so you can go there and look at the base streets and alternatives as well, and the map that we briefly showed as well. The next thing was the power of social media. We do have Facebook, Twitter, of course, our webpage. I just wanted to show everybody this, you know, Rotary Park flooded, looked like a lake, and of course, me trying to, a poor attempt to be humorous, stated that we were having a water, starting water recreational, such as, you know, whale watching, shark hunting, and, and so forth, which spread like wildfire. As of today, we had a hun, almost a hundred and eight thousand views. A hundred and eight thousand views. That's the power of social media. My wife would say very clearly that a lot of people were saying, you know, this is funny and all this, you know, humorous, it helps. My wife made me very clear to say that she would tell everybody, please do not encourage me in doing that. But it, it's a very powerful tool. At the same time we were, this, this was going on, we put out about the park open forum that we had last week, and we began, when you, when you have that many people checking out your website, we had very good input. People are now paying attention to that. We gained by likes, I put the statistics here for us. Of course, you see, we reached a hundred and ten thousand people by some of the posts we had, engagements over thirty, and this was, this was for a week's worth, just one week's worth. Thirty-two thousand engagement, post engagements, we gained two hundred and twenty followers just in one week's time. So that's good. I also put down there by the age and gender. It's kind of follows the male, female, then plus the age groups that you see, kind of what I thought. I didn't think the male versus female would be such a drastic difference, but it's predominantly female followers versus the male. Age groups followed pretty much what I thought. So just what, you know, powerful source of-
Darkest one is, is women?
Oh, you're in, the taller one is the woman, yes. It's a navy blue, it's hard to tell.
And the others are dogs?
The others are female, and then very little is other.
Yeah, what's other? Is that dogs?
I, I, no, I think it's probably, they didn't list male or female, is what I believe. They didn't specify. So a few dog followers, yeah. But it's just the power of social media, I, you know, our Facebook page, please look us up, City of Beaver Creek, and you, we do give, you know, just like the road improvements, or surfacing improvements, the park updates, we are all, you know, this, this video will be on there tomorrow morning. The Planning Commission video is on there, the park meetings that we have are on there. Anything that we tape live will be, show up on our Facebook, YouTube, and Twitter accounts the next day. So if you can't catch it live, you can catch it on there the very next day. So, but it's, I just wanted to point out, that was, I thought that was fantastic on the number of people following, so thank you for following us. And this is already on our Facebook page as well. Couple things coming up, our summer kickoff and kite fly, Saturday, April twenty first, at Dominic Laffino Park, and that's from eleven AM to two PM. Activity stations, kites to fly, and hot dogs. Hey, free food. Come get a hot dogs. So please show up for that, support that, as well as Arbor Day event, Friday, April twenty seventh, again at Dominic Laffino Park. Free, free trees to give out to attendees, and craft and story for the children to enjoy. Perennial Trade Day, Saturday, April twenty eighth, at Rotary Park Shelter, and that's at the twenty-two sixty Dayton-Zenia Road. Preview begins at nine thirty AM, and trading begins at ten AM, and bring ten plants labeled to trade with others. So as always, we have a lot going on in the city, and please, we encourage participation, and feedback is always welcomed, and so thank you for that, and thank you for, in advance for attending.
All right, thank you. Mayor's time here. I believe everybody got the word, UES made another very nice contribution to the Fourth of July, another five thousand dollars, so thank you very much, UES, for being such a huge supporter of that event. Some of you may be aware, and others not, tomorrow evening at seven o'clock at the Nutter Center, Beaver Creek All District Band Concert. Sounds like it's going to be a fun evening, and I'm going to try to make it, if I can find a way not to have any stairs. But, but anyway, I'm going to try to be there. I'd like to thank Vice Mayor Garcia for filling in for me while I had a little joint replacement. And I think that is about it. Now it's council time. How about we start with the Vice Mayor?
Okay, well, hi. I don't have much to say tonight. I do say that the city manager and I will be going to the Dayton Development Coalition Fly-In next week, Monday through Wednesday, so I'm looking forward to attending that. I know Pete mentioned earlier, if anyone on council has any recommendations, or anybody on staff, if there's anything you would like us to know when we go, or to present, please let us know. I look forward to coming back in a few weeks with a report for council.
Thank you. Councilmember Van.
I went to the Green Cats meeting, but there was not really too much to report. They keep doing what they're doing, and I think that we're lucky to have that public transportation program. It is the Appreciation Week for, National Appreciation Week for first responders who are on the front lines for the opiate epidemic. And so I wanted to thank our police, because when they are the first responders to a crisis, you never know what you're going to walk into. And I just wanted to celebrate that, what you do, and, and it's so important that, that they get somebody to come out, and that you know how to respond to so many different things that could happen. So just wanted to shout out to appreciation to our first responders. I also, the Beaver Creek Women's League showed the Free to Ride movie. It's a, a movie about Beaver Creek and the hard decision that was made when buses came into Beaver Creek. This was a Beaver Creek Women's League movie, and for, until the eighteenth, if any of you wanted to watch it, if you go to the BWL website, there's a link until April eighteenth that you can watch it. And I just thought I'd pass that on, because somebody might want to do that.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Ruffin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This past Saturday, I had the opportunity to attend a roundtable with Attorney General Mike DeWine, Secretary of State John Huestead, Montgomery County Sheriff Phil Plummer, as well as author J.D. Vance. This roundtable was about the opiate epidemic, and it was hosted at a program called the Corner Storm Project. And the Corner Storm Project, you could think of it almost like a one-stop shop, where they give services to those who are facing addiction, mental, physical, emotional, as well as career placement, as well as even housing for those who are facing addiction. It was a eye-opening, because someone looking from the outside in, we see all these numbers on TV, the, the statistics about the opiate epidemic, but they actually had residents attending the program, and it was interesting to see their insight about how they face addiction, and what they go through and fight in each and every single day. So kudos to those at the Corner Storm Project for doing what they do, and me coming out of it, I realized, you know, this is a social issue, and there's no, as we all know, silver bullet to, to defeat this, and it takes efforts as a society to continue, and will always continue, to face this. Sheriff Plummer mentioned that, at the start of it, he, Montgomery County alone was seeing fifteen, twenty, twenty-five overdose's a day. Now they're down to five approximately a day, which is a, a great improvement, but still work to be done, as always. Like the mayor, I look forward to attending the all-band concert tomorrow evening at the Nutter Center, seven o'clock. I believe there's a small fee to enter, but it should be a great event. And the last thing I will report is, actually, today was the last day to register to vote for the May primary, so I hope that everyone will be exercising a right that many fought for and gave their lives for, so that we can vote coming this May. That is it.
Thank you. Councilmember Lott.
I'd just like to remind, and I, you probably were going to mention it, but the Beaver Creek Women's League is hosting their scholarship function, luncheon this coming weekend. It's a Mardi Gras theme, and the Beaver Creek Women's League does a tremendous amount of, I like to think of, community service and service to the community by sponsoring scholarships to women in transition, and to some of our high school students, so I just wanted to give a shout out to the wonderful event they'll be having, I believe it's at the Hilton Garden Inn. And so I want to thank the Beaver Creek Women's League for doing things in our community to support women.
Thank you. Councilmember Epton.
Thank you, Mayor Stone. I have the high honor tonight of announcing our staff anniversaries. We have a number of longtime dedicated employees, and first off, thanks to, not only to them, but to everyone in, within our staff. Celebrating with us this evening, Jeff Stein in our Parks Department, celebrating thirty-one years. Dee Frisk in Planning and Development, twenty-eight years. John Wolcham, Engineering, twenty-six years. Chris Gerhardt, Public Service, fourteen years. Steve Click over at the Golf Course for fourteen years. John Bondi, Police Department, for eleven years. Barry Weiss Cup, Police Department, for ten. Tom Beck, Public Service, for nine years. And Charles LaMester at the Golf Course for three years. So I appreciate everyone's dedicated service to our community and, and to our, our city. With that, that's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Carr.
Yeah, Mayor, I wanted to congratulate you, and the first Thursday event that you have, Pasha Grill was the location, I think Councilmember Ryan was there. It was quite an event, so really enjoyed that. And then I had an opportunity to go to a Parks and Recreation Display of Equipment that'll be built by the community members, and that was kind of neat to see. Enjoyed visiting with them.
Yeah, the parks are really perking up, so to speak. I mean, they're doing-
Beautiful, beautiful.
The Parks Levy's going a long way, they're doing some fantastic work out there. That's right, that's right. All right, anything else from a council member? We'll move on, and now is citizen comments. Is there anyone here this evening that would like to address council on any issue at all? Anyone? Seeing none, we will move along. Next item. Do I have a motion?
Motion to adjourn meeting, sir.
Second. I have a motion to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned, thank you very much.